Good morning. We'll call this meeting to order for the Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, Commission Meeting of Sierra County. We're still operating under the declared emergency and public health order dated March 23rd, so this meeting is not attended by the general public, but it is available on several outlets and on KCHS radio, so we hope that we have folks tuned in. If you have any public comment, email that to kwilson@sierraquo.org or bswingle at sierraquo.org. We must receive those on the Monday before the commission meeting, and they will be read into the record. Shelley, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Paxton?
Here.
Commissioner Day?
Here.
Commissioner Luna?
Here.
This is Commissioner Luna's final meeting, as she is termed out, and if you would, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico and the zealous people of perfect friendship among the United States.
This is a special day for us. We've got some guests in our audience that I want to introduce. We have Commissioner-elect Hank Hopkins and his wife Kelly Kay. We have the current Treasurer Terry Kopson with us, and we have Treasury-elect Candace Chavez. And, of course, we've got the Sheriff in here. We've got our Flood Manager Travis Atwell. Is that your Chief Deputy?
Cindy Rodriguez.
Cindy Rodriguez is here with us. And we'll have a swearing-in after this meeting, so we'll see these fine folks again. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Commissioner Day moves to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have approval of minutes, a special meeting, a regular meeting, and a special meeting is their motion.
Commissioner Luna will make a motion that we approve all three sets of minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. I don't have any public comment. Do you, Manager Swingle?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, we have not received any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Day moves to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. We've got a couple of presentations before we go to the County Manager. Treasurer Terry Kopson, would you come up here? Commissioners, will you join me? Come on up here. We have a plaque for you from the county thanking you for your service and the excellence that you've served being our Treasurer for eight years. And we just want to wish you the very best in retirement and whatever is next, but we appreciate your service.
Thank you ever so much.
And I'd like to see if y'all have a word.
No, just thank you, Terry. You know, it's two years since I've been on the Commission. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Wish you the best in everything you do moving forward.
Thank you very much.
So, we got sworn in together. We get to leave together. Good luck to you. You get to retire. I get to go back to work.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Did you get the picture? We're all moving around.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Please go ahead, Bruce. I didn't mean to skip you.
That's okay. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I think it's important to point out a couple of significant highlights of Terry's career. The last two years, the Treasurer's office has not received a single finding, audit finding. That's pretty amazing. She did a wonderful job with the county's revenues coming in. Her collection rate is about 98.8%. That's high. I've worked in a lot of counties, and 98.8% is an extremely high collection rate. And I think it's kind of a credit to her dogmatic personality in contacting people and staying on them and bringing in the revenues. The life of a Treasurer is pretty difficult because county offices want interest on all of our investments and our income, and a Treasurer's responsibility, interest is really the last element she's allowed to look at. First and foremost is the safety and the security of the funds. The second thing is that it is liquid, and she can move money around as needed on very short notice when necessary. And lastly, it's on interest. I think that the county moving forward with the purchase and construction of the new building to consolidate county services, she's to a large extent the result of her handling of our finances and our revenues coming in and putting money into investments and saving money for the county over years. And I don't believe it would have happened without her involvement and effort. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you so much.
We have one more. Commissioner Luna?
If I cry, it's fine. You'll get to zoom in on me.
What about Chuck?
Yeah, I can. I have a Photoshop person, though, because I can fix that.
We had some help figuring out what kind of plaque to give you, and McKenzie was instrumental in convincing Bruce that he should be a belt buckle. So I'm going to let you open this, but it's quite a splendid buckle.
Buckles are a prized possession in our house. Absolutely.
You better show that. Well, it's been a wild ride. Travis and I have been on this board for two years, and you helped guide us in some direction. You had six years on us, and we had some trying times, but we had some great times. And I just want to thank you for your service. You moved the county in a positive direction for eight years, and I know that you'll continue the same with the City of T R C. And who knows what else we'll get.
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks.
Well, I just want to echo what the Chairman said. You know, we didn't always agree on anything, and it made for some interesting times, but you know, we could always get through it, move on to the next agenda item, and have another good discussion. I very appreciate that. And I just look forward to working with you and the city. You're going to do amazing things on that commission. And like the Chair said, we'll see where you go from there.
Thank you.
President next.
But thank you guys very much. This is beautiful. Thank you.
Bruce, do you want to say anything?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I do. You will never hear me call a Commissioner by their first name, particularly in a commission meeting, but Francis, you are absolutely one of a kind. You were on the commission that hired me. I've been here six and a half years, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. We've had great Commissioners, you one of them. It's been amazing to work with you. I never had to ever second-guess what you were thinking. I always knew exactly what you were thinking and how you felt on every subject. And that's important. That's important to know. You are now, again, starting your legacy with the City of Truth or Consequences, but we will miss you. And it's absolutely a privilege to be able to go over the accomplishments that we've completed this year and under your leadership, as well as the entire commissions. Many of these were not just the result of one or two years. Many years of undertaking drove us to the point where we could cover some of the accomplishments that we're going to cover today. And that in large part is due to your leadership and the commission's leadership. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Let's have a hand. I know you want to say something, so.
Thank you everybody for the kind words. So it was probably one of my most honorable moments, proudest moments of being a Commissioner, was to hire Bruce, because he definitely has done so much for Sierra County. I remember, we sat in Jocelyn's office, and we were worried about hiring somebody who wasn't from Sierra County, because the other two applicants that we were considering were homegrown. And Bruce has made Sierra County his home, more so than I think the other people we even interviewed. And so I am so very proud to have that be one of my accomplishments. Three Managers, six fellow Commissioners, one Attorney. You lost all the other nice things I was going to say, buddy. Two and a half Sheriff, lots of ups and downs and countless hours, but it has been a wild ride. I appreciate the debates we have had, the disagreements, the, you know, we would vote against, split on something, and the next thing, we were together. And every commission I have sat on has been that way. And I think that is a great representation for the county residents. It says volumes that we represent, we speak for them. And I think all three of us have always had the best of this county at interest, even when we haven't all agreed. And so I look forward to this last meeting, and it looks like I have one more meeting on Friday now for the Spaceport Tax District, but it doesn't stop here. And so Hank, I'm so honored that you get to replace me.
Thank you.
Good luck. I'm done.
Thank you. Manager Swingle, we'll go to reports. We have the Restrictive Housing Act Quarterly Report.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, with respect to the Restricted Housing Act, it's our obligation to, every quarter, review the number of inmates that we had in restricted housing. Our inmates are in Luna County, and we ended up, in the first quarter, we had one individual that was in restricted housing for one day. Anyone that's in restricted housing over 22 hours has to be reported. Has to be reported to the State. It has to be reported to the Commission and discussed at a commission meeting. The one individual for one day was on suicide watch for that period of time. We don't have the documentation from Luna County at this point to do the second quarter, and it's on a fiscal year basis. But as soon as that information is available, it'll probably be in the January meeting, we'll go over the second quarter report as well.
You might explain to our audience what restrictive housing really means.
Restricted housing is, well, the legislature enacted a law last year requiring, actually it was earlier this year, requiring county detention facilities to not keep people in restricted housing, meaning housed by themselves, for more than 22 hours in a given day. That's a really, really tough pill to swallow, I guess, because inmate behavior determines where they reside in a facility. You have individuals that may be predators, or they may be victims. You can't put them with other people. You've got to restrict their housing. But legislation was passed, and it is a requirement, 22 hours maximum, where they can actually reside by themselves without having some activity and interaction with other inmates. So the one case we had was an individual on suicide watch. They're on suicide watch, they are by themselves. You try to limit that to a shorter period as you can, but the level of crisis they're in determines how long they're going to be in that restricted housing. So we're fortunate. It was one day. It's something that's easily explainable and justifiable to the state powers that be on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, now that this report's been made to us, we're required, under state law, to submit that off to the Legislative Finance Committee Librarian, and all of reserve that for all the folks that are interested in reviewing it.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Pato. Anything else on that? You've got other reports?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, the annual report.
Okay.
Commissioners, the accomplishments Sierra County achieved this year, and there are many, are the result of hard-working, committed colleagues doing everything in their power to improve the quality of life for the residents of Sierra County. First and foremost, Sierra County's staff truly need to be recognized and commended for their outstanding performance and commitment to this community. The Commission should be proud, and I know you are, of the manner in which staff handled the adversity of 2020 and the professionalism demonstrated by county staff. Your staff and services they provided are essential to the everyday lives of the residents of this community. As most businesses and organizations closed because of the pandemic, your staff went to work every day. And whether people recognize it or not, or realize it or not, they provide important and essential services. Commission, executive, and legislative duties were administered. Roads were maintained. Waste was disposed. Peace was preserved. Inmates were detained. Fires were extinguished. Elections were held. Revenues were collected and distributed. Bills were paid. Resources were procured. Taxpayers were served. Cases were managed, and projects were completed in 2020. To our Sierra County colleagues, thank you for your outstanding service for this year. Realizing the uncertainty of the virus, thank you for working through the pandemic, when many of them had many concerns for their own safety and the safety of their family, but they performed their essential services. And thank you for your commitment to advancing the quality of life in Sierra County. Commissioners, I cannot emphasize enough the impact of the COVID pandemic on county services, as well as, I think, every industry. As far as the accomplishments, staff provided essential leadership and services, including emergency management to the community during the pandemic. County offices and services remained open, accessible to the public during the pandemic. Numerous staff were reassigned, or given additional duties in public safety or public health roles to manage the pandemic. Since the COVID pandemic started in March 2020, Sierra County dedicated every resource necessary to resolve the problem. To minimize the impact of the virus to the community, to ensure proper cleaning and decontamination of buildings, to ensure proper monitoring and screening of staff, as well as our inmates, visitors, we provided and delivered food to individuals experiencing food insecurity. Ultimately, the county provided over 7,900 meals to individuals experiencing food insecurity. We kept the public informed of all critical information during the pandemic, including information regarding the public health orders, the data on a day-to-day basis of where we were, how many cases we have, how many tests we have, how many deaths have occurred in the community. We broadcast meetings and workshops on numerous media platforms, including KCHS, and we assisted healthcare professionals, the school district, and local governments with their personal protective and emergency management needs. To date, the county's distributed over 143,000 pieces of personal protective equipment to each of those entities. We are a small community. That is a tremendous amount of effort that occurred daily over the course of the last nine months. Thus far, the county has expensed approximately $180,000 on the pandemic. To date, we've received a little over $50,000 in reimbursement from the State. We have submitted a second reimbursement request for the balance of the money, and as soon as we have any information, we'll communicate that to the Commission. Realizing the pandemic and subsequent public health orders financially devastated businesses in our community, the county submitted a CARES grant for small business applications, for individual businesses to submit an application. The original request we submitted was for $500,000, but the county was ultimately awarded a little over $292,000. All the CARES funding that we received has been awarded and distributed to the businesses. Thirty-one of 33 businesses received some type of grant funding. The financial impacts of the pandemic are uncertain, but are expected to be dire, both locally and at a national level. That, in addition to the lack of fully funding economic development efforts for, basically for decades, and the lack of a real comprehensive economic development strategy collectively between all the organizations in the community, has caused a significant population decline, economic contraction, and high unemployment rates in Sierra County. For this reason, staff worked with the Midreal Grand Economic Development Association, CE Labs, and about 25 community members from Socorro and Sierra Counties to develop an economic recovery plan for both communities. an economic recovery plan for both communities. Elements of the plan will be implemented over the next five years, 2021 through 2025. The data suggests that the community is at a critical point, that, uh, key stakeholders and public and private stakeholders must unify for the overall economic benefit of this community. Or if we don't, the community will continue to experience population and economic loss. Sierra County has been in that negative cycle of our population is greater than our economy. P is greater than E. We have to turn that around where the economy is ahead of our population for us to thrive and to flourish as a community. So we'll have a number of discussions in the near future. I know that you've received that assessment and we'll have some opportunities to talk about it, probably, I think, in a workshop would be in the, the best interest, or creating an economic summit and bringing in a lot of stakeholders, public and private, into a summit and have a discussion of what the data tells us we should be. In collaboration with Mergis, staff developed and drafted an economic, uh, development resource guide for businesses and to be used as a recruitment tool for prospective businesses. The guide provides valuable information about New Mexico's really innovative incentives for business and local opportunity zones and financial and business assistance resources. I have provided you with a copy of the Economic Development Resource Guide. Take a look at it. I've looked at many from around the state, actually around the country, and I think you'll find that this is a very fine document. And it's going to be very beneficial to the business community. Staff negotiated and executed the AeroEnvironment LITA Grant, uh, LITA Project Ordinance and related documents, uh, giving them up to $500,000 for eligible costs to develop their project. The project will create 30 new jobs at an average salary of $60,000 per year plus benefits, and a $2.5 million investment in infrastructure in this community. The direct economic impact of this project is estimated, uh, at over $146 million over the next 10 years in direct benefit and 60, over 62 million in indirect and induced impact to this community. As you know, we were negotiating the Spin Launch LITA Project Ordinance, and that's up to $4 million for eligible costs to develop their electric, uh, space launch facility. Uh, the economic impact of this project is 59 new jobs at an average salary of 70, $72,000 per year plus benefits, over 64 million in benefit to the entire state, and an overall, overall economic impact of over 393 million. The ordinance, uh, you'll be drafting or approving, hopefully, the, uh, resolution to move forward and post the ordinance, and then the commission will entertain the ordinance at the January meeting.
Okay.
As an economic development opportunity, the commission created the Film, Media, and Music Advisory Board. The board's role is to promote Sierra County as a film destination, as well as to help local businesses engage in business with the industry. The commission's action is an important, is important to the county's economy and is consistent with the economic recovery plan. Staff completed the comprehensive broadband study for the community. The project took a little over nine months to complete, and the study accomplished four strategic elements. One is identify the need for broadband in the community. We saw many reports that indicated from the state level that Sierra County had 100% broadband countywide, and that every business that needed broadband had broadband. Well, that was a myth. That was inaccurate, false information. We have evidence of that not being the case. It identifies the gaps in, in broadband in the county, and it creates a broadband map showing the special, the speeds delivered by the, uh, uh, by the companies, which is significantly different than what the FCC maps s- suggest. And what the FCC maps are, are what the service providers say they're providing in communities. What we have in reality is very different and much less than what's actually happening out there. Uh, and it quantifies the cost of bringing broadband to Sierra County. This was a major undertaking. We had two consultants, two companies consulting on this project, and, uh, you have to give credit to Sierra Electric Co-op, Sacred Winds Communications for moving forward with the, from the very beginning, kind of working side by side with the county's plan. As we're having the plan developed, they're submitting for the grants based on the data that ultimately will result from the plan. They use that information and they've been awarded approximately $10 million to this point to bring broadband into Sierra County. Phase one and two of the plan is broadband in everything south of Williamsburg, and phase three and four will be the remainder of the county. Currently, many of the study elements and recommendations are being, are being accomplished as, as we speak, either by Sierra Electric Co-op and Sacred Wind, by the service providers, or by the county. The county has been subject to historic and recurring flooding, damaging both public and private infrastructure. For this reason, the county engaged in a complete and completed a year-long flood and drainage control plan for the community. The document will serve as the strategic plan for the county and flood control, and will assist in prioritizing projects and securing funding for mitigation efforts. Our engineering consultants know of no other jurisdiction in the country that sanctioned an entire county-wide project. It was generally, you deal with one drainage or another. This was a very comprehensive plan. The plan presents the hydrologic and the hydrologic analysis for the water sheds and flood control infrastructure in the county. It quantifies runoff, evaluates existing drainage facilities within the six major water courses, uh, to determine where improvements may be necessary, geomorphic analysis to determine sediment transport potential issues, identifies flooding issues, develops drainage improvement alternatives that will reduce the risk of flooding, and then it evaluates the drainage improvements alternatives for the best option. Drafting numerous, uh, staff drafted numerous communications, attended numerous meetings, and participated in numerous telephone calls to preserve, support, and protect Sierra County's rich agriculture, culture in his historic way of life, including opposition to Wild and Scenic River legislation, which among other things adversely affects individual property rights, opposition to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife's Mexican Grey Wolf reintroduction program, which drastically impacts our ranching community, opposition to the U.S. Forest Service actions that harmed rancher grazing rights, supported Second Amendment and the right to bear arm, and opposition to the New Mexico Civil Rights Commission's recommendations, which target law enforcement and increase local, increase local government's liability exposure for no need. Over the past two years, staff and many community members represented the county on the U.S. Census Complete Count Committee, including management of two grants. The goal of the Complete Count Committee was to ensure a fair, accurate, and complete census count, thereby achieving the highest self-response rate possible for hard to count and under counted communities and populations in Sierra County. The committee worked purposely and tirelessly participating in many community outreach meetings. However, once the pandemic started, we had to change. Community outreach was no longer on the table, and we amended our efforts to advertising through radio and newspaper and promoting the census and participation in the census. Uh, I think it's important to point out the community partners included Sierra Electric Co-op, Sierra Healthcare, Sierra Vista Hospital, the State Veterans Home, New Mexico Gas Company, and the local governments. They all participated on the committee for the duration of the two years. From procurement, successfully completed numerous significant RFPs, including the new building construction, the Hillsborough Community Center, and the Cuchillo Negro Flood Control Mitigation. Staff is managing the approximate $2.8 million construction of the new complex. The building will house the assessor, the clerk, probate, and treasurer offices, administration, emergency services, flood control, misdemeanor compliance program, District Attorney's Office, SCRTA, as well as serve for the commission chambers for the commission. A little over a month before the annual county fair, the community experienced a historic flooding, flooding and damage at the fairgrounds, including the Albert Lion of N-Center. Realizing the importance of the, the county fair, staff and the New Mexico counties rapidly mitigated the flood damage caused by the flood and, uh, the, the damage and restored the site. The damage and repairs are estimated to be approximately $250,000. The road department and facility management spent a lot of time early in the flooding to mitigate the damage, and, uh, we were completely, fully reimbursed for our costs that we had, uh, approximately[1287.58][1287.61]$26,000. We have received that compensation. Staff lobbied for much-needed capital outlay funding for the community. The state approved, uh, funding for four of the county's top five priorities, which is unheard of. However, due to the state's budget crisis that they are in, uh, mid-year, in a special session, the state defunded two of the projects. And one of them was the Hillsborough Community Center, their kitchen project, and the purchase of two ambulance for SVH. We still did receive funding for $200,000 for the array baseball field in that complex, and $250,000 for heavy equipment for our road department. Realizing government accounting and payroll, it's extremely complex. We've learned that through various companies that we try to bring on board, uh, to handle our payroll. We've actually transitioned the payroll to the private sector. Private Triatic is now completed approximately three months of payroll services for the county. This effort's going to save staff about 30 hours of pay period on, on payroll services. County completed their FY 1920 audit, resulting in two findings, two findings. Mr. Chair, I think you've been in the conversations and in the telephone calls with the auditing company. The county has really come a long way in improving our, our, our finances and our, our record-keeping for the audits.
I thought it was a much improved audit, and hats off to those who worked on that.
Yeah. Uh, the county served as fiscal agent for Main Street and the SGOA on some limited projects. Uh, we procured and expensed a New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant for Main Street and, uh, expensed an appropriation for the SGOA for kitchen equipment. The assessor's office was one of the offices probably hit hardest by the pandemic. Um, it had a huge impact on their office. They performed their internal work and met their deadlines and customer requests, and kept up with sales and buildings. Where they did fall back some is on going out and doing actual appraisals of property. They were restricted from travel out into the county, limiting their exposure, uh, to COVID during the pandemic, but they, they did accomplish an awful lot of work that they could do. Staff is currently working on the year-end report in the assessor's office. Flood control, flood control, approved 51 building permits, 22 in Tier C, one in Elephant Butte, and 28 in the unincorporated area of the county. Conducted 85 floodplain, uh, determinations for realtors and owners. Completed the Cuchillo Creek FEMA project in under two weeks, which followed a four-year delay by Homeland Security and FEMA. So, once we got the money, once we had the approval to move forward, staff, flood, Jocelyn, King Industries, they really went to town. SmithCo did the, the, the actual work and did an amazing job. And flood completed 114,260 linear feet of levee repairs, including emergency repair to Mr. Montoya's property in Tier C, and that was a result of the flooding around Williamsburg and what also affected the Albert Lion. Misdemeanor compliance, the DWI compliance program averaged 55 clients, uh, throughout the year, while the misdemeanor compliance program averaged about 45, uh, probationers throughout the year. George is still pretty concerned about pre-trial compliance. Uh, it's been as great a challenge as the pandemic has caused cancellation of jury trials in, in the district, in the seventh district, and, uh, that's likely to continue into at least January of 2021 and may extend longer. At the peak, misdemeanor compliance program had 220 clients in their pre-trial compliance, uh, with drug testing requirements, and they were able to accomplish that, particularly challenging in light of the pandemic. Unfortunately, uh, the office's prevention efforts had been almost nonexistent for 2020. All of that requires, uh, a lot of contact with, with the clients, and that just did not occur. It was not in the cards during the pandemic and comply with the, comply with the, uh, public health orders. Um, I know areas that George wanted to move forward with was, of course, the Sierra County Shuttle, which did not run the entire year, National Night Out, the Red Ribbon Week, and enforcement and speaking programs for the schools. Uh, they were just not conducted. Their goal is if the, if the pandemic continues, that they're probably going to move these into some type of virtual manner and, uh, have them in 2021. Uh, good news, George Lee was elected to the New Mexico County DWI affiliate to be the DWI affiliate misdemeanor compliance ad hoc chair, and he's also serving on the AOC Adult Misdemeanor Compliance Standards Committee. The road department, this year, very busy. Uh, they completed two road projects, one in Winston on the St. Cloud Mining Road, and the other in Palomas Canyon, the North Palomas Road. Uh, St. Cloud project consisted of two pots of money, and it was 308,000 and some change for that project, and the North Los Palomas Road was approximately $144,000. The road department solicited and received a raid grant to clean up illegal dump sites throughout the county, and, uh, they accomplished that during the year. And I think something that's been on your radar for some time is, uh, the construction vehicles and equipment traveling to the spaceport on Upham Road caused tremendous damage to the brand-new AO-13 road, and the department managed to resolve those problems, fill potholes, moved a lot of earth, compacted the earth at Yost Bridge, and stabilized that, um, during the fiscal year. We are currently negotiating with the state DOT on transferring that road to them, and that process is just a very long, tedious process that the state has to go through for that transition. The road department was very involved in the flooding at the Albert Lion and the, and the event center, as well as, uh, the fairgrounds. They spent a total of 320 man-hours. They had 130 trucking hours, 107 loader hours, 18 backhoe hours on that project, and they removed over 5,000 tons of dirt and debris from the site. Then our insurance company and, and their, uh, consultants removed another 50 tons of trash and debris. SCRTA has been very vigilant in keeping staff safe and continuing operations in a safe manner during the pandemic. SCRTA staff submitted and received grant funding for the, the new building for a generator for radio consoles and a recorder system. The state is from the state 911 funds and equates to about $200,000. Then they're also purchasing a new radio system and tower, and it's been designed and it'll be ready for installation in the new building when the building's ready. The treasurer's office, staff provided, but provided budget figures timely. Staff worked with- Staff worked with the finance department to balance the books in a timely manner and roll over the balance, the beginning balances for FY 2021. Again, I mentioned earlier, the treasurer's office had no findings in the audit, and staff balanced our tax schedule with the assessor's office, and that's a little over $8.5 million for 2020 tax collection, and staff has collected over $4.6 million as of December 9th, which is well over 50% in two months. Going to read a quote from Terry. Number one, staff accomplishment, and this was a goal that she's had for a number of years. They achieved their goals by cross-training in all aspects of the treasurer's office, which made the office more efficient and effective. Staff has gone above and beyond to complete the cross-training in her office, and she wants to recognize her staff for an awesome job and job well done. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I've given you a copy of the detention accomplishments for the year, as well as for the month. Most notable in those are the summaries of the three grants. I won't get into them, but they're the behavioral health grants that Virginia and Detention are facilitating. And I just want to say, commissioners, Commissioner Luna, job well done. To achieve these accomplishments in a pandemic year is incredible. So, everybody in Sierra County, the staff, the elected officials, need to be recognized for their accomplishments of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Luna, you have comments?
I think the entire year in review goes to speak volumes for the commitment of the staff. They deserve the kudos, I believe. It's, there is great leadership, but without them, I don't know how to operate a backhoe, so we'd be in a lot of trouble. So, it definitely falls on the staff, and thank you to them. I can't even imagine what a disaster this would be.
Yeah, last year, Dave.
I do have some comments. First off, Bruce, thank you for the presentation. This is something I really look forward to. You know, I think the public sees this once a month. You know, they see the online, but the real work gets done behind the scenes. What you and the staff have accomplished has been phenomenal. I mean, this is a good year without the pandemic.
Correct.
You know, versus you throw on the pandemic and the flood. And I think showing the ability for our staff to adapt to those changes just shows how great they are and how great of a staff we have overall, and I think it starts with your leadership, all the way down to every staff we have. They do such a phenomenal job, and so I think for the community out there listening, if you do see a county staff member, do thank them, because they are the ones that, you know, they were the essential workers out working during this time, providing the services, and then taking on further responsibilities and handling the pandemic and other issues that come up. So, you know, for the community, if you see a staff member, please thank them, and I just let the staff know from the commission that we really appreciate everything they do.
I will. Thank you.
Well, this is quite a report. It's lengthy, but I think it's important that our constituents hear how hard the county staff has been working. It's a product of leadership, Manager Swingle, and thank you for your leadership. But it's also a product, as our kids learn in youth sports, what a team is about, and a team is about putting your teammates before yourself, and we saw that every day. We saw that with the almost beyond count trips made to get personal protective equipment, when the truck went right by here and wouldn't drop it off, so you had to go to Deming to pick that stuff up. We saw that with, after the flood, I walked into the Albert Lion Center, and Spike is in there with a shovel, shoveling mud. And we saw that with people like Terry's folks being tenacious on getting our taxes, so the first half is due, and we're already over half of our assessed value, so that's tremendous. We see it with every single department doing all they can to keep Sierra County working, and this was a challenging year. May we never have another like this again. But our folks kept their heads about them and continued to strive for the best for the county citizens and those who come here to visit. So, I really want to thank you for the report, but thank you for leadership, and I too want to extend thank yous to every single county employee. We appreciate it a lot. So... Next item is Scott McLaughlin with the Spaceport update. You're going to have to train Hank in that.
Hank, get over here.
Spaceport America, this is Scott.
Hi, Scott. This is the Sierra County Commission. We are ready for you.
All right. I'm ready.
You are on the air live, ready to go, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Love Commissioners Paxton, Day, and Luna, and Manager Swingle. I've been watching and noticed several references of Spaceport America, so it looks like things are warmed up a little bit. So, I believe you have the presentation I sent to you in front of you?
Yes, we do, Scott.
Okay. So, feel free to interrupt me. I'm going to go through it pretty quick, and, you know, please feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions, and of course, if you have any questions at the end. So, the... I'm going to give you kind of an overview just real quick on the aerospace industry and the economy, and then we'll talk about the Spaceport America. I want to refamiliarize you with the areas that we are operating in out there and the workload, and then we'll talk about some of these capital improvements. So, Slide 3 talks about the startup space economy, as some reports have been calling it, and you can see from the graph, this is from Bryce. Bryce Aerospace produces reports that they offer free. They can do more specialized in-depth reports, but they offer quite a bit. What they do is kind of a free report, and you can see that the investment in what they call the startup space economy is still expanding, so that's good for the entire industry, and we think it's good for Spaceport America as well. You can see that an important part of the investment is venture capital, and as a commercial spaceport, you know, that's one of the things we're focused on. We're happy to host any of the government programs, especially EOD, you know, with our neighbors, White Sands, or anything going on in Kirtland, but a great deal of the future is going to be, you know, commercial operations, and that's going to be funded, you know, through venture capital and other means. In Slide, the next slide, Slide 4, is just kind of a continuation of that, showing the increased capital through 2019. You know, we expect 2020 to be a slowdown of a year, and also, there's been some consolidation in the marketplace. Some of the business models, lofting, small satellites to space, we've already seen some people we've talked to in the last few years go out of business. And so, there's a real competition between small operators and the medium operators and what's going to happen in the future. So, but we think we're still well-positioned to capture a lot of the test and development, and someday in the future, you know, going to orbit from our site, once the technology will support that. So, the next slide, 5, shows the current U.S. Spaceports. This lists all of the commercial spaceports and the military spaceports. What's not shown on there are the maybe half dozen or so licenses that are being applied for, Michigan, Huntsville, and a few other places that are looking to do the same thing that we've done. In many ways, we're still ahead, because we're so purpose-built that, and we're in such a remote area, that we're kind of unique, and these other ones are continuing to use old military bases or to re-appropriate some industrial areas, and so they have a bigger problem with population and operating, you know, in a remote area for safety concerns. So, you can see that the continuation of, for example, Boca Chica, which is SpaceX, their preference to operate there is primarily based, I think, on being able to operate over water. They have a long ways to go before they'll be allowed to fly something like Starship, but it, I don't know how many more of these private spaceports will develop, but we're still well-positioned. And if you go to the next slide, Slide 6, you know, I show the airspace for White Sands Missile Range, which is a big factor for us, and all the other good parts of being at Spaceport America, when it comes to the weather, our altitude, being in a remote location, and also, White Sands, we have the ability to offer our customers the radar, telemetry optics, and meteorology services, and we've seen quite a bit of those used in the last year. So, I think we're still well-positioned in the marketplace. You know, COVID has slowed. We had quite a few launches scheduled over in the spring, and a great deal were postponed and put way up under the future, and a lot of them haven't been rescheduled yet. So, we'll see what happens, you know, as the vaccine gets out and the COVID restrictions drop. We're looking forward to that. The next slide, this is, you know, here's our 18,000 acres. This is Slide 7, and we divided those up into three areas. We call the horizontal launch area, the vertical launch area, and the advanced technology area. If you go to the Slide 8, you can see who's operating in those areas, and Manager Swingle already spoke about AeroEnvironment, the success with ALITA funds and the building of their site. You can see where they are, and then, of course, Virgin Galactic and Up Aerospace out in the VLA, and then Spin Launchway down south, which is almost 10 miles from, you know, the HLA. So, I'll refer to these areas, HLA, the VLA, and the Advanced Technology Area, the ATA. Moving on to the HLA, this is just a top picture, you know, Google Earth-type picture. You can see almost in the center is the Gateway to Space from Virgin Galactic. It was on, we would have liked that what happened on Saturday could have been livestreamed. It would have been great for New Mexico, and, but we understand that they're in a test mode, and at some point in the future, they will livestream, and everyone will get to see how things, you know, go with their flights. But they, you know, the Gateway to Space is really a great operating building for them, the runway. They were in the south part of the runway doing the fueling of the vehicle and getting the vehicle ready for flight, and then they took off going to the north. And on the Spaceport Ambassador's website, there's someone who's posted some really good pictures, who was at the end of the runway and took pictures of the vehicle. And then I'll show you another picture from a company that travels around the country taking pictures of various launches called, they call themselves NASA Spaceflight. I don't think they're actually affiliated with NASA, but I'll show you a picture in a minute. But they were out there also in the north part of the runway. They found a good place to kind of hang out. You can see to the north, this is not the most recent picture, so the far north is where AeroEnvironment is. At some point, we'll get a better satellite picture of that, but in between that and the Gateway to Space, we have lots of room for expansion, and then to the south of the Gateway to Space, there's plenty of room for expansion, and some of our recent environmental work has focused on making sure those areas are cleared and ready to go. I'm going to talk about a building we call the Stark that was approved by the NMSA Board a few weeks ago. That's to the far west, and you can kind of see where the road makes a bend and a Y. That's the entrance to the Spaceport America, and the Stark Building, the Spaceport, the Stark Building's going to go to the Spaceport Technology and Reception Center. So, going on to Slide 10, this is, again, a vertical look at the vertical launch area, I mean, an aerial look at the vertical launch area, and there's really not much there. We've got some roads. This is where those two big pads in the upper right, where SpaceX were going to operate at many years ago. We're still able to lease out those pads. About a year and a half ago, we had a company there doing rocket engine testing, and you may have seen in a recent press release, we're going to have a company called C6 Launch from Canada set up an engine and do some liquid testing out there. So, that's an exciting thing. These kinds of advances, of course, we'd like folks to show up forever, you know, for years, but bringing in a crew for, you know, a month or two and filling up hotel rooms is still an economic benefit, you know, to the community and to Spaceport America. So, the larger gray area there, which is all gravel, is where Up Aerospace does their engine manufacturing and testing, and then the gray area to the lower right is where Up Aerospace launches, and we're expecting, I think, two more launches from them next year, and hopefully, an increased cadence once we kind of get away from the COVID. A lot of the launches for them and others that were canceled, were canceled because it's hard to get the people in the right place to do assembly. It's hard to get the parts. The supply chain is bogged down, so it's been a bit of a mess, but we do think we're going to have an increase as we get into 2021. Going on to Slide 11, this is the advanced technology area. You can see there's pretty much nothing there, but this is an older shot. If we were to get a more recent shot, you would see a pretty big area where Spin Launch is operating. They've done quite a bit of work down there, and they're continuing their construction effort. I believe there'll be a press release later today from EDD about some incentives they're getting, and in that press release, they're talking about somewhere between 30 and 60 people that will be operating that site. So, it's a big win, getting them there, and AeroEnvironment in the last year and a half and year have been a big win for Spaceport, and we're looking forward to working with them for years to come. Well, the reason we call this the advanced technology area is because we're allowing for this to be an area where we do activities that are more unique in terms of something other than just a vertical launch or horizontal launch. There are these kinetic methods, of which Spin Launch is one, but there's other thoughts about how to take the place of a first stage, and because this is on the lower end of our spaceport, and it's away from everything, this is a good place for them to allow those tests. Going on to Slide 12 here, is just a recap of some of the events in the last, I'd say, 18 months. The top picture is a picture of Up Aerospace testing one of their solid rocket motors. The next one down is Exos doing their vertical launch of a liquid fuel rocket. That's a licensed launch with FAA. The next one down is an Up Aerospace rocket, and then we did have, the next one is the CST 100, the Boeing capsule, that they were doing drop tests to test the parachute both our side of the mountain and White Sands, depending on the winds. And last, I believe it was last December or January, that the CST 100 landed in White Sands. I don't know if you remember that. That was kind of an exciting event, because that was a re-entry into White Sands Missile Range. The next slide down is a picture of the wing of the AeroEnvironment, and then, of course, Virgin Galactic and Swift Engineering, which we expect to be back this year, off and on throughout the year, testing that vehicle that launched off of that trailer platform. Going on, I'll quickly speak about Virgin Galactic. This is Slide 13. Hopefully, you all were able to get as much information as you can, you know, that they released, the engine ignited. If we go on to, let me go to Slide 14. I don't know how many people have been inside the Gateway to Space, but Virgin has been fitting out the top floor. This is the final, I believe, fit out for them, the astronaut area, and sooner or later, they'll do a press release, and we'll get to see what that looks like. But with the White Knight in front of the GTS in this picture, it makes the GTS look small almost, but it can hold two of those, and you can see down below, there's a spaceship lined up with the White Knight, and as we know from the quarterly reports that VG has talked about, they're still planning on two White Knights and three spaceships in the Gateway to Space. So, and earlier in the year, they had talked about weight on wheels for the second spaceship, meaning they progressed far enough along to get the landing gear out and put weight on it. So, I think what they have noticed is that sometime in 2021, we'll see the second spaceship here. If you go to Slide 15, this is from this group called NASA Spaceflight. I thought this was a great picture, you know, almost directly under the White Knight after it had released the spaceship, and as we know, the motor started to ignite, and then the computer shut it down, and I think Virgin has said that they plan on rectifying that and getting backup for their, this test to space sometime very soon. This was one of those kinds of tests, though, that you wouldn't ordinarily conduct as a safety test when you build in safety systems, and yet, their safety system worked well, and they were able to shut down the engine and glide home just as planned. So, this is still a successful test in many ways. So this is still a successful test in many ways, and I think Virgin has learned a lot from this. But we also learned a lot from it. We had our staff out there ready for anything that might happen, whether it be a large crowd or, or a mishap on the road or some other mishap. And we also had help from the state police, Department of Homeland Security, of course the local sheriff. A lot of people are out there ready for anything. We know that in the future, these will be much larger events with bigger crowds. So we want to be ready for that. And of course, we work hand in hand with Virgin, so we are all in sync. And so it was, it was still a good day for, I think, everybody there and we feel, we feel ready for the future. The next slide is 16, and this is the, this is a real picture. It was kind of an interesting morning. AeroEnvironment, I believe that flew in July, that was the first flight. And this was just a flight where they flew around the spaceport and, and proved that they could take off and land from the, the new facility that they'd built out, out there. This was an $8 million facility that they built with their money. The grants they've gotten are for future expansion. Later on, I believe it was in October, then they were able to fly up to 62,000 feet and they stayed up. They took off in the morning and they landed and they, they took off in the morning when it was dark and then they took, and then they landed at night when it was dark. And this, these were important tests for them. The, the final outcome of this, of this craft is to fly upwards of six months at a time. It's solar powered. It will go up to 80,000 feet during the daytime. When the sun's out, it will drift down to around 60,000 feet at night and just keep going up and down and carry communications equipment on it. So it's very exciting, though they plan on being back in March. And the next slide, 17, shows the hangar that they built out there for the system. It will actually hold two aircraft of this type and then their office space. So when they're here, that's going to be, you know, 30 to 40 people once they get restarted in the spring. And we're hoping that they continue on their, on their way to getting FAA certification for this aircraft and, and will be here for years to come. The long-term plans could possibly include production of the aircraft in the area and we're helping them, you know, grease the skids as much as we can to continue that, to increase the jobs. And 18, slide 18 is Up Aerospace. Again, we just briefly talked about them. They, I don't believe they conducted any launches in 2020, but we expect two in 2021 and, and again, an increased cadence. They, they've been here a long time since 2006. We consider them one of our foundational partners. And then the next slide, 19, is Spin Launch. As you know, Spin Launch has been operating kind of stealthy. They're careful with what they want to show the industry, although this Wired article talks a lot about how their, how their system works. I'd recommend going to wired.com and looking for Spin Launch if you want to learn more about it. It's a, a very, very unique system and, you know, completely innovative, all new technology and has the potential to really change how, how especially small satellites are launched. And so we're, we're very happy and honored to have them having selected us as a possible, as their test site. And they've commented that, that, you know, working with Sierra County and, and state of New Mexico and, and Spaceport was a big factor in allowing them to move forward quickly. So their construction should be done sometime in 2021 and we expect, as, as manager Swingle noticed, noted quite a few jobs out there. Slide 20 shows a picture of that, of their accelerator, but again, I'd recommend going to the Wired article if you want to learn more about how this is going to work. Slide 21 is the Spaceport America Cup, which we had to unfortunately cancel because of COVID. The, this is the 2019 team outside the Las Cruces Convention Center. Every year we conduct this, we learn quite a bit and the plan had been to do more expansion and we also, of the number of teams, and to also start integrating regional and statewide participation in a way that we could get them, while these people are here in New Mexico, we can get them to tour around and do more in New Mexico, spend more time in New Mexico and in the region. You know, again, that's, was halted because of COVID, but right now we're still making plans to do this in June of next year. With COVID, it's just really hard to know what, what that means. Are we going to have to do a lot of social distancing? You know, how are we going to host the event? Are we going to lengthen it out over more days? We don't know yet. We're working closely with Ezra, the Experimental Sounding Rocket Association. They, they're actually the, you know, they, they run the event, we're, we're the host and we're, we, we meet with them weekly to figure this out. But we know it has a big impact on hotel stays in the region. You know, it's almost a week long of, of more than 1,500 people in the area, so it's an important event for everyone. The slide 22, I, I have a few of the non-aerospace events, especially previous to Virgin coming en masse. You know, we were focused on all kinds of events. If we could derive revenue and the space for the spaceport and, and some economic impact in the area, hotel stays and, and per diem, we did that. And so here's a list of some of those things. A lot of these are, you know, short events like this Harper's bizarre photo shoot. You know, we get four or five people in town for three or four days. It's, it's kind of a small impact, but still it, it drives revenue and, and helps the local economy. Bigger events like the EC, EC, ECTA Invitational, we even had Jay Leno here for that one. That event this time last, when we had it, was kind of kept private. It was the first time we had it and ECTA wanted to keep it quiet until we worked out bugs. But the plans in the future are, are to allow some amount of people to come on site and watch, watch, watch what happens. And so we're going to try and figure out a way to host that. But again, we were shut down with COVID. That, and that was a pretty big event in terms of economic impact. The, also on there, you see the Infinity Car Reveal. That took approximately a, a week to, to set up and were involved a lot of people. So that was also a big economic impact. And all this is, you know, great for New Mexico. We get great exposure for truth or consequences for the, the Spaceport America and the state of New Mexico. Slide 23, we are trying to increase our, our STEM outreach and especially with COVID, it's something we like to focus on with the, with the specific technology and science that we deal with. So we're trying to do more of that with COVID and, and once the COVID restrictions are released, we'll get back to having students come on site for tours and experiments and things. Okay, I'll quickly talk about capital improvements. The four that I'm about to show you were approved by the NMSA Board, I think a week and a half ago or so. These were already appropriated funds through bonds and had kind of been put on hold in the last year due to the investigation, but we've got them restarted and we're, and we're going to move forward aggressively to get these done. So the first one is the Spaceport Operations Center repairs. You don't have to read all this, I'm just providing it for background if you'd like. If you go to slide 26, you can see a picture of, of what's called the SOC. And what I want to show you real quick is that, that upper level, the roof is all concrete. That was actually a, they, they inflated a balloon-like structure and sprayed concrete on it and it makes for a very strong structure, but, and, and it sits on a ring foundation. Well, that ring foundation unfortunately is moving a little bit separately from what amounts to an interior two-story building that was built in a traditional way. And those two foundations are not connected and they've been moving separately. We looked into, if you go to the next, let's see, slide 29, you can see some of the damage we've seen. And, and that's because of the, these two buildings essentially moving separately from each other. The, the superstructure is in good shape. There are not problems with the superstructure of either the dome or the building, but there's an interface between the dome and the building and, you know, where the, where you have normal just walls and those walls sometimes are getting compressed. So what it amounts to is a drainage problem, just a water problem. There are some clay layers out there and water can accumulate and of course with clays you can get some expansion. And so the, what we're going to do is with this procurement is, is basically recreate the drainage field, repour some concrete and asphalt. And that should cause the two foundations, when they do move, to move much more in sync, although the idea is that there won't be water surrounding that building. So moving, and by the way, on the, on the SOC, we did go back and try and examine whether we could hold the original builder and architect, you know, those folks responsible. What we found is there was a bit too much engineering design changes and other things that had happened in that time period. And our assessment was that any sort of lawsuit or trying to get those funds back would not be successful. So moving on to the Stark Building, this is the slide 30, the Spaceport Technology and Reception Center. There are IT items that are inside the gateway to space. They, the plans for many years ago, for how the gateway to space would be used included Spaceport America basically having offices in, in the gateway to space. And so there was quite a bit of our technology that's in the gateway to space, but the footprint of VG has been expanding. We want, of course, want to let them expand that footprint and we want to get our stuff out. And this precipitated the idea that we needed an IT center. We already have IT equipment in the SOC, the previous building, but it's not a big enough building to, to hold a server room and to, and to do more of what we needed. So there were funds identified for an IT center, but this has been expanded. If you go to slide 31, this has been expanded now and it, and it all still fits within the, within our available capital outlay to actually have a much bigger building up close to the entrance of the, of the Spaceport America. So I want to be clear, this is not a visitor center per se. This is not the idea of the visitor center that has been floating around for years and years. This is designed as a multi-purpose building that can host a small media events. It can, we're, we're pretty sure that our customers like AeroEnvironment and Virgin Galactic will use it on a regular basis. There's meeting rooms that will also be when, where, when you have the tourist, space tourism, when they come in, they'll be able to briefly go in this building. Right now there are no restrooms, for example, anywhere close to the front gate. So this building is designed to kind of be the, the first building that is encountered by people. We're not going to have offices in this building. Again, this is just multi-purpose for when it's being used. And, and of course, we'll still have the IT center. The, the, the building, the room that is marked VG and customer flight experience, that's there, we have no agreement with VG or anybody on that yet, but we're planning to try and have a bit of an, of experience, some type of space tourism out there that's similar to what's in the gateway to space. I don't know if anybody's been in the gallery at the gateway to space, but that was designed over 10 years ago and that's where, when people do the tour, they, they go out there now, that is aged out. And there's also a room that Virgin Galactic would like to use. So we're, we're pulling those items back out and they will go in this building. So if you go to the slide 32, this kind of shows where it is. It, it doesn't show where the, the gate is, but if you were to go on just a couple widths of that building, that's where the front gate is. So, and you can see we're planning some sort of observation hill to the south. So again, it'll be leasable by anybody and we think it will be a, a well-used building and can even help drive revenue for the spaceport. The next one is slide 33. This is the vertical launch area, vertical launch rail. So many of our customers show up and for a launch and they have to bring their own rail. And what the rail does is it stabilizes the vehicle before it reaches aerodynamic stability. That rail is, the rails they bring are a lot of times, you know, they may, they may know how to build a rocket, but oddly enough, they may not have built a very good rail. So for safety's sake and also to increase our revenue and use of the vertical launch area, we embarked on trying to find a manufacturer for a rail and finally settled on using Up Aerospace's rail by agreement with them. So we worked on a sole source earlier in the year, a sources sought that was announced. We did not get response, so our plans are to continue. And if you go to slide 34, you can see a picture of the rail. And so this will get installed out in the area, in the vertical launch area. So what will happen is, is this will just be another leasable item on site. And what this will allow us to do is attract customers who are building a rocket, who can then simply ignore building a rail, but can come out and use our rail. And this is designed to be positioned depending on the winds and depending on the flight trajectory. So by using UP's design, they can also use the second rail. They would have to lease it just like anybody else would or rent it just like anybody else would. But this allows customers, particularly UP, to have dual launch capability, like they could launch two rockets on one day, for example. So this is a, a, a big benefit to the spaceport and we're looking forward to getting that out there. The price tag includes the things that you're seeing in the picture, like this rollback shelter. The rail sits on a massive piece of concrete that is the, basically the counterweight for everything and then stabilizes it when it launches. And then we have to put in gravel area, we have to put in a fence and a, and a control room. This will make us kind of unique, you know, not very many of the spaceports have a horizontal launch area and a vertical launch area. So this continues to improve what, what is our competitive advantage of our other spaceports. And then finally going on to 35, that the VLA area, if you saw on the, if you remember in the picture, there's very few improvements to the area. We have the gravel road and we have some portable buildings and there's some electricity in the ground that was brought there by SpaceX, but it doesn't go anywhere yet. So the plans with the VLA areas are to improve the roads. One of our customers said that they, bringing their rocket all the way from Texas in their truck, that the worst part of the road was going from our entrance into the VLA area because of the washboard. So there's going to be improvements made to the road. We'll put in some restrooms, we'll get some water, some other buildings and, and allow for people to be on site for a much longer time and have a more pleasant time on site. And again, we think this will drive revenue. And, oh, their slide 36 shows a little bit of that and 37, just the area in general. So moving on to slide 38, upcoming, we're, we're continuing to work regularly with Virgin Galactic. You know, they've, they've started to move pretty aggressively. And what happened on Saturday was a positive for everybody. We want to see them go to space, but we expect that to happen soon. They'll go to space a few more times and FAA will hopefully release restrictions and allow them to fly. So our cadence and our, our, you know, primary foundational customer, that interface is going to, is going to get very busy and we're excited about that. Of course, with AeroEnvironment and Spin Launch, we're also expecting quite a few operations with them over the next year. And then once the COVID restrictions are off, we're looking at more launches. We expect Swift to be back and we're talking to other customers who could regularly fly in our airspace. The NMSA Board put out an announcement, I think a week and a half ago. One of the things that will happen is a selection of a new executive director. And then following or around the same time, we're working on a strategic plan and a capital outlay plan that was noted in the investigative report and we're working on that. And then continuing to work on what I've been calling space operations or space ops tourism. Space tourism is kind of a funny word that kind of applies to everything right now, but really it is a, you know, we're talking about people going to space both with Virgin Galactic, but also Blue Origin and maybe even with SpaceX at some point. And those are people actually going to space. But there's a huge other segment of the population. They're, they're, they probably don't have $250,000 to spend on a ticket, but yet they want to come watch a launch, they want to come experience what they can. And that I think is part of the future of the visitor center and other space ops tourism items in the area that I think as a community, we need to start focusing on it. You know, if people come and watch a launch, they're going to be here for a few days. What are they going to do with their time? You know, are there other space-related things we can help the community build up so they can experience? And so internally, we've been looking at that and talking to customers, I mean vendors about other items like that. And at some point, I think we'd like to think of this as part of our strategic plan. And that would include a visitor center and there's some other ideas about how to get the, move forward on the visitor center too. But I think we're all waiting to see VG operate in a more regular manner and hopefully that will happen in 2021. So that's, that's all I've got for you. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Commissioner Luna, questions, comments? Vice Chair Day? Well, this is a very interesting presentation, Scott. Thank you for that. We're excited to see the multiple developments at Spaceport and, you know, we've received some assistance with AeroEnvironment on our flooding, doing some drone work for us and some other things that we've coordinated directly with activities out there. We're very pleased that we're We're very pleased that we're seeing construction. We want to see that continued development. And we also want to be a part of it, realizing there are two counties, but Spaceport's entirely in Sierra County, and we love that the footprint is in our county and that we're the home of Spaceport. We advertise that quite often. But this was an excellent update. Manager Swingle or Attorney Peto, do y'all have comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just one question for Scott. What is the timeline for the selection of a new executive director?
The window closes, I believe, December 22nd for applications, and then it's up to the Board to work on that over the, I'd imagine, over the next, you know, three or four weeks or so. I think their intent is to go quickly to, you know, to keep stability here, and it's been an interesting year for us, but I think that's their plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Scott, thank you for waiting on us and taking the time to update us. We appreciate your presentation and the relationship with you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to share the story.
You bet. We'll go to the next item, November reconciliations. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have is the certified report from Candace Chavas from the Treasurer-elect. It's a recap and reconciliation report from the Treasurer's office.
Any questions?
None. Commissioner Day moves to approve.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Motion in second to approve. Roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have no old business that I see, so we'll move to new business. The letter of support for Senator-elect Crystal Diamond to be appointed to Senator Smith's vacant seat. Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff received direction to draft a letter in support of appointing Crystal Diamond to the vacancy vacated by Senator John Arthur Smith. She was elected to Senate District 35, and it's a vacancy now as Senator Smith resigned a couple of weeks ago. So, the letter is here for your action.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes a motion. We approve.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
I think we're excited to have Crystal in there, and we'll look for great things from her, but I think it's imperative that we get this recommendation for an appointment to the Governor, so we'll sign that today. The next item is letter concerning proposal of initial release and translocation plan for 2021 for the Mexican gray wolf. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff was directed to draft a letter concerning the proposed release and translocation plan, and the county attorney drafted it. It's an excellent letter. Have no comments. Commission's discretion whether they want to amend the letter or send the letter as is.
Interesting letter, Attorney Peto. I like the way that you took a tactic of we are not allied with nor consider them representing our viewpoint, the People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, but their perspective lended a tone to the letter. I also like that it's being sent to the Game Commission because they are the ones that represent us in the state, and it'll be copied to Fish and Wildlife Service and Forest Service. Is there any discussion on the letter?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to commend our attorney for writing this. It's a different way of making an argument, but I think it's just as effective, especially with the current members on the Game Commission. This letter is right up their way of thinking, and so Commissioner Day moves to approve the letter.
Commissioner Luna will second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
One note, Dave. There's a typo on the fourth page, the top line.
Yep.
They?
Got it.
Okay, thank you. You know, the nitpickers in Santa Fe will look at that too.
No, I appreciate you mentioning it. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay, we'll go to contracts, agreements, and procurement. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is an agreement between the City of Elephant Butte and Sierra County for flood plan management responsibilities. This is something that the county has approved in the past with other jurisdictions. It calls for a $25, a fee of $25 per review in the contract. And I think when you look at the numbers that Travis Day provided, excuse me, Travis Alwell provided today.
The other Travis.
Pretty minimal involvement in Elephant Butte as far as the plan reviews. I think it was a one. How many was it?
Following their last meeting, Elephant Butte is now looking to have the floodplain administrator do the review process on all the red lines.
Yeah.
Which, there's an issue with that because the red lines are not considered not flood plan. It's something the city came up with on their own. And it's still being dealt with on the city's side, but they want the floodplain administrator with the city engineer to do the review and the entire process for red lines, which means it's no longer permit review coming out of my office. It's going to be extensive work in Elephant Butte coming out of the office. And the city manager was supposed to be here to answer questions, and I guess she couldn't make it.
So, where does that affect this agreement for the MOU between us and City of Elephant Butte?
I believe the MOU needs to state what the actual duties are going to be, because right now, it's only for permit review and doing what a floodplain administrator's position is supposed to handle. They're wanting to actually add more duties to it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Travis, is this something we want to table until you can get more clarification?
Until the city manager can actually be present to answer those questions.
Okay. Is there a motion to table?
Commissioner Day moves to table the MOU.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like it might be appropriate to have a moment and induct or swear in our new commissioner and clerk. I don't know how that works when I'm still in the meeting, but it's weird. It's okay.
Attorney Peto, can we take a recess? Have our swearing in?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there a motion to go into recess for the swearing in and then return to business?
Commissioner Day moves to go into recess.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved in seconded. Shelley, roll call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. And welcome, Judge. We have a group here for you. Good to see you. Wish you were here with us.
Good morning. I wish I was there as well.
Okay. How do you want to do this? Do you want to start with the Commissioner-elect and the swearing in? Okay?
That's fine. We can start with the Commissioner.
Commissioner-elect Hopkins and wife Kelly Kay, you want to come to the front? X marks the spot.
Should we get out of the way?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Hopkins, if you'll hold the Bible, Ms. Hopkins. And Commissioner, if you'll put your right hand on the Bible, or, excuse me, left hand on the Bible, you're correct, and raise your right hand.
Got it.
And repeat after me. I, William H. Hopkins.
I, William H. Hopkins.
Having been elected to the office.
Have been elected to the office.
Of Sierra County Commissioner, District 3.
Of Sierra County Commissioner, District 3.
In the county of Sierra, state of New Mexico.
In the county of Sierra, state of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And the Constitution and state laws of New Mexico.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
You are now officially sworn in. So, I will electronically sign the oath, and my assistant will send it back, I believe, to Mr. Tulley, and then you will be able to sign the oath. Okay? Who's next?
Candace, you want to come up, and we'll get you, and then we'll get Cindy after Be Candace Chavas, the county treasurer.
If you'll raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Candace Chavas.
I, Candace Chavas.
Having been elected to the office.
Having been elected to the office.
Of Sierra County Treasurer.
Of Sierra County Treasurer.
In the county of Sierra, state of New Mexico.
In the county of Sierra, state of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and partially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are official. So, again, I will electronically sign this, and then my assistant will send it back, and you will be able to sign your oath. You're welcome.
Cindy, we'll get you as the deputy.
If you'll raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Cindy Rodriguez.
I, Cindy Rodriguez.
Having been appointed to the office.
Having been appointed to the office.
Of Sierra County Chief Deputy Treasurer.
Of Sierra County Chief Deputy Treasurer.
In the county of Sierra.
In the county of Sierra.
State of New Mexico.
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. And again, Ms. Rodriguez, I will electronically sign it, and it'll be sent back to you, and you can sign the oath. Okay? Get it filed.
Judge, we have Shelley Trujillo, the county clerk.
So, raise your right hand.
I do it wrong every time.
And put your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Shelley K. Trujillo.
I, Shelley K. Trujillo.
Having been elected to the office.
Having been elected to the office.
Sierra County Clerk.
Of Sierra County Clerk.
In the county of Sierra, state of New Mexico.
In the county of Sierra, state of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
And Mr. Trujillo, I will sign this electronically, and it'll get it back to you, and you'll be able to sign your oath. And do we have Ms. Whitehead? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Amy Whitehead.
I, Amy Whitehead.
Having been appointed to the office.
Having been appointed to the office.
Of Sierra County Chief Deputy Clerk.
Of Sierra County Chief Deputy Clerk.
In the county of Sierra, state of New Mexico.
In the county of Sierra, state of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. You are official. And again, I will electronically sign, and these will all be sent back, so you can sign your oaths.
Thank you so much, Judge.
Congratulations. You're welcome. Congratulations to everyone, and thank you for asking me to do this. It was a pleasure.
We appreciate having you, Judge. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Is there a motion to come back into order?
Sumut.
So seconded.
Shelley, roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, all you new officers in new positions, and we'll look forward to working with you. Let's see, we were at the SKIRDA loan agreement, were we not, Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what you have before you is the loan agreement between Sierra County and New Mexico Finance Authority for the loan of $648,695 for SKIRDA. This is for them to get their space designed as necessary for them to move in. It's a 14-year loan, and it's a blended interest rate at 0.919862% interest. The county would be dedicating or pledging Emergency Communications, GRT, for the repayment of the loan. Right now, it looks like it's going to be about $50,000 a year, so it'll come out in intercept funds directly from the revenue generated and the 2/8 grocery receipts.
Mr. Manager, does this require the other municipalities? Does this put any financial obligation on them?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, no, it does not. This strictly, Sierra County is the fiscal agent for SKIRDA, and Sierra County has the 2/8 grocery receipts tax imposed at this time, so it would come directly from the GRT.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
None. Commissioner Day moves to approve the loan agreement.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved in seconded. A roll call, Shelley? Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. The SCURDA general and no litigation certificate, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that is just another form that the states require, or NMFA is requiring in the loan documents. It's all dedicated toward this loan. Staff's recommendation to sign.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate that we just approve C, D, E, and F, all in one motion since they're all related?
Mr. Chairman, if the Commission's still applying, you're absolutely free to do that.
So moved.
So, there's a motion to approve the general and no litigation certificate, the arbitrage and tax certificate, the delivery, deposit, and cross receipt certificate, and F, the intercept agreement? Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Those four motions, or five, I guess it is, pass. It is four. The RFP 2020-06-00 for the Hillsborough Community Center, Phase 1, Manager Swingle and Jocelyn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you know, this funding is approximately two years old. The county is, has gone through great lengths to use the legislative appropriation that we received to do improvements to the Hillsborough Community Center and to address the doors and the windows that are currently experiencing, you know, weathering damage over, you know, decades of time, as well as the stairs leading from the street up to the facility. The building is registered, it's a historical building, and we are spending a tremendous amount of time working with a historical and preservationist out of the state. It's been a two-year process that we've never dropped the ball on. We've continued to move it forward, just the needs of the preservationists have been overwhelming and demanding. We're spending approximately $75,000 on this particular project and we would complete the project in most, in any other building for the $75,000 we have dedicated. However, we're only going to get a very small fraction of the work done because of the requirements that we have to follow and the practices and methods that the contractor is going to have to use to restore the building and maintain it at its, at its, the time of development and building of the building. I'll defer to our CPO for any other comments.
Morning, Jocelyn.
So basically, it's conserving the historical elements of the building, the rocks, built the initial steps. All that has been evaluated by the state already and they've told us what we can and cannot do. So have to phase this out with the funding that we have, $75,000. Seems like a lot of money for this phase, but it's really not considering all the work that has to be done and it has to be done, like you can't just take out a window and put in a window. You have to do certain studies and they want like this, an initial stairway up to the building to be conserved, so we have to use the rocks that were built, used as initial steps as part of the new building. So we're trying to move into phases from the steps because it's a safety issue because they're already starting to appreciate. However, we'd like to hopefully show the state that we use this appropriation in the right method and hopefully get funding in the future for the rest of what's needed in that community center.
Smithco's ready to take it on, I'm sure. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the RFP?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
The RFP is approved. Thank you, Jocelyn. The project participation agreement between Sierra County and Spin Launch, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item H and, item I, it's the project participation agreement and the intergovernmental agreement. These are on the agenda for your information. If you direct staff later in the meeting to approve the resolution to post the ordinance, then we'll have it on the agenda for the January meeting. We'll have the ordinance, the participation agreement, and the intergovernmental agreement.
So we don't need to vote on this, it's just for information only and it will be on the January, tentatively, the January meeting?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Is that good with my fellow commissioners? Okay, no action on H and I. Resolutions, ordinances, and proclamations, Resolution 109031, Declaration of Emergency Drought Disaster, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Staff had been contacted to entertain the idea of a declaration of emergency drought disaster and had Chief Tully talk to the fire chiefs around the county as well as his own opinion and it's the recommendation that the county would actually approve this resolution, 109-031. And basically, it's identifying that we are in an extreme drought conditions and it's asking the governor and the President of the United States to also file subsequent disaster declarations for Sierra County and Southern New Mexico.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Day moves to approve.
Commissioner Luna, seconded, you're fine.
Moved and seconded.
We're going to the same way.
It's taken us two years, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah, right. Roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 109035, the SCURDA loan, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is yet another loan document for the SCURDA loan. Basically setting out more of the terms in resolution format for the ordinance, or for the resolution and the loan. Staff's recommendation, since you have approved the loan agreement itself, to approve Resolution 109-034, 35.
Commissioner Luna moves to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 109036, establishing our calendar year for 2021, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is an annual effort that we go through to identify the holidays for the next year. The schedule equates to 11 full days off and three half-days. It's a little less than what we have this year. It all depends on when the holidays fall. Christmas, Thanksgiving fell at pretty advantageous times in, or fall and advantageous times in 2021. It's staff's recommendation to approve this schedule.
Commissioner Day moves to approve.
Commissioner Luna, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Just a note, I'm glad to see that we observed the county fair with a half-day at noon so our staff can participate in the fair. That's a, that's a great thing. Resolution 109037, Spin Launch Economic Development Project. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this resolution is directing the county clerk to publish the notice of intent to consider the ordinance approving Spin Launch proposal for an economic development project. This will allow us to post the ordinance, make it available to the public, and receive any comment. And then in the January commission meeting, you'll have a public hearing before the meeting and then you'll take action in the meeting. Also included with the resolution are the financial impact data for, for this particular project. And as I mentioned in our, and the application, the lead application itself, it's staff's recommendation to approve this resolution and let's get into January, get the ordinance approved.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. I really enjoyed reading this economic development, it's still just, I do not comprehend how they can have a non- rocket-fuel motor and spin up to six times the speed of sound to release it from a tether and go up. That's, that's, that's beyond comprehension for this old farmer, so.
It's rocket science, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I don't know that any of you have gone out to see Spin Launch sites since the groundbreaking ceremony?
No.
And where they're at with building this, I use the term centrifuge to spin it around, but they call it something else. Some very intelligent name, but it spins very quickly. I'd love to schedule a time where we could go out. I know that with the pandemic, they're hypersensitive to guests, but I'll see what I can arrange to get you out to take a look at it. It's important that you see what's in your backyard.
Absolutely.
That would be much appreciated, Manager Swingle, thank you. Resolution 109038, adoption of a master drainage plan, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you approved the master drainage plan at the last meeting. You heard the consultants talking about the entire plan. Gave a great description of what they did and what the outcomes were. However, the consultants would like the commission to approve a resolution because that typically accompanies funding requests. When we submit applications for funding, having a resolution where the county adopted it has a little more influence than just the minutes of a commission meeting. So it's staff's recommendation and at the request of Wilson Engineering that the commission approve Resolution 109-0038.
Commissioner Day moves to approve the resolution.
Commissioner Luna will second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to executive session, I think it's appropriate for us to take a moment and remember fellow, former fellow county commissioner and police chief Russ Peterson who passed away last week or over the weekend. I just think it would be appropriate if we just took a moment and remembered him. Tomorrow, they will have grave side services at 10:00 with the procession leaving from Carrico's Family Funeral Home.
Well, I think that's surely appropriate, Commissioner Luna, thank you for that. Russ Peterson was a longtime fixture in TRC in Sierra County and a good friend to all. He'll be missed, but we, we hope the family is doing well and we send our condolences and our best wishes to them. He's a loss. So, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Section 1015E through H, I don't even have to look anymore. Make the motion, we go into executive session to discuss pending and threatened litigation and real estate as it's listed on the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
We are in executive session.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Day moves to come out of executive session and certify that no action was taken and only matters listed on the agenda were discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Ro call?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Do we have any other actions to consider? Manager's swing?
No, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we do not.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. We are adjourned if y'all vote all in favor.
Yes.